Okay, welcome to the planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so moved.
Second. Your call.
Commissioner Newton? Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knox?
Yes.
And Commissioner Newton? Yeah, the agenda?
Are there any corrections to be made on the minutes?
I noticed in all the votes, my name is not in the minutes.
Put your name in.
Thank you. I think I was here.
Says you're here.
I know.
Okay, any other corrections? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knox?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
This is a quasi judicial hearing regarding the continuation of the public hearing and consideration of SR 19-03, request by Phil Check and Associates for a setback reduction extension to allow the renovation of existing single-family residence. The applicant, Phil Check and Associates, on behalf of the property owner, owners Janice and Jillson Donald, Donald Lee, are requesting a setback reduction extension for an approved setback reduction SR 18-05 on September 27, 2018, for 1, 148 North Large Street, tax lot 04603, MAP 51019D, located in residential motel zone where Cannon Beach Municipal Code Section 17 dot 16 dot 040 standard, request a minimum five-yard setback and a 15-foot non-street side setback. The request will be reviewed against the Section 17 dot 64 dot 040 setback reduction time limit, time limit approved for setback reduction. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any member believe he or she has a conflict of interest or personal bias? Has any member made an ex parte contact or made a site visit?
Site visit.
Staff report?
Just to summarize, this is a purpose of the request was to allow roofline modification to accommodate a loft area like the existing roof. The proposed new roof will encroach into the minimum setback areas in the residential motel zone. Proposed roofline modifications are shown on sheet P2 of the application materials. Maximum building height for pitched roof in the RM zone is 32 feet. Proposed roof peak will only be about 19 feet. At the last hearing, you had asked for three questions in response, and I think they were directed at Bill, so Bill can further respond to them, but basically whether the decisions run with the property or the owner. And unless specifically stated otherwise, in the code, land use decisions run with the property. For example, when a variance or setback reduction is approved, the approval doesn't expire with the change in ownership, and the new owner doesn't have to come back in. Number two, can the planning commission approve an extension conditioned upon ownership? When an application is filed, the city is required to approve the permit based on the standards and conditions in the code. Unless those standards require an evaluation of ownership, there is no basis to include ownership as a condition. Three, may the planning commission wait to make the decision until they have verification of ownership? As the applicant has stated in the reason for the extension application, the estate is currently tied up in probate. As discussed above, the decision is not dependent upon ownership. The planning commission should make its decision based upon the evidence within the record regarding whether standards of approval have been met. And I also wanted to make sure that everyone got a copy that was forwarded with the letter from the Barman Law, Thomas Barman. It's dated November 25. Did everybody get a copy of that?
Okay.
And so if you have any questions, Bill's here then.
First off, would everyone adjust their mics so that I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, you can't hear me either?
No.
We can't hear you.
Oh, wow.
You can't?
Well, okay, I gotta be really close, so can...
I can hear it.
I was happy to hear you.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, because that's why I thought I could hear myself pretty well.
You did a fine job.
You want me to repeat it, though? I'm happy to repeat it if you want.
No, I think you'll, we'll probably repeat it again.
Okay.
Okay, that's the additional correspondence. Then the pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes, precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, and evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such request by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional written testimony, argument, and evidence. Persons who testify shall receive recognition by the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify who they represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant? Evidently not. So, so the staff, you have anything you wanna...
I would recommend seeing if there's any other public that might be interested in speaking, whether in opposition or...
Yeah, yeah, okay. Is there presentations by proponents? Are there presentations by opponents? So I...
If you want me to, I'll touch briefly on some sort of boss out the ownership question. And as I understand it, this was an application that was filed for a, what was it, a setback reduction. It was approved, and now they've asked for an extension, and the question is whether that extension should be granted. Some issues came up about ownership at the last hearing, and one thing to keep in mind is that the city doesn't even really have authority to determine ownership. To the extent there's a dispute, it's really up to circuit courts to decide who owns it. So what does that mean when somebody comes in with an ownership dispute? I've actually had two different cases where this was a real live issue, where somebody came in with an application, and a neighbor came in and saying, well, this whole, you know, west side of this property isn't his. I've adverse possessed it, and it's actually mine, the adverse possession where you occupied it for 10 years, and we sort of scratched our heads and said, we don't have authority to tell whether adverse possession has occurred or not. That's up to the courts. All we can go on is a deed, and the deed showed that the applicant owned that involved thing, and that was sufficient evidence to move forward. The city approved the application, and apparently, we found out later, there was a lawsuit about adverse possession, and the circuit court said, no, there was, you know, the adverse possession hadn't occurred. To the extent it had, I think the end result would be you approve whatever development, the owners, you know, the reported owners fight it out, and if in fact adverse possession has occurred, the permit is never acted on because there would be trespass on that property. The other one that we had was actually a brother and sister owned property together in some form of tenancy, joint tenancy, and this is where my lack of real estate knowledge comes in. There's different kinds of joint tenancy, and I forget which one it is. The brother came in and said, I want to develop this property, and here's what I want to do. Sister came in and said, no, we don't want to do that, that's not what we want to do. And what happened is they went to circuit court, and eventually, as a result of that, the application was withdrawn, you know, and so the end result is that, is that the city really doesn't have the authority to tell whether or not something is, who owns what. What we have to go on is the best evidence of ownership that we have, and when ownership is a question. And there is, you know, some element of ownership in terms of authority. Does somebody have the authority to apply for this application or not? Otherwise, you know, in terms of, you know, I have a variance, can it continue? That's typically tied to the property. There are certain circumstances when that may not happen. For example, I'm aware of some administrative rules that tie certain benefits to status as a veteran. For example, if there's a rule that says if in fact you're a veteran serving overseas, you can get additional extensions on certain things. In that situation, whether or not the owner is a veteran, you know, who the owner is becomes important in terms of that. But absent a situation like that where you actually have a reason where the ownership matters, typically ownership isn't a question for land use applications. It's a matter of looking at the criteria that are in the code and whether or not they can.
We just wanted to know.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for...
I mean, I think, I think that's, I don't think there was no land use dispute or anything, or dispute between ownership. We just want to know if it was her property still, the daughter that did pass to her, and that was it. Yeah. Right? Isn't that what the other issue was?
Yeah, I think that's...
Well, as a matter of fact, it hadn't passed.
Right, it was still appropriate. So that was the only issue we had. We, there's, I don't think there's any kind of dispute about the...
Yeah, there certainly hasn't. I haven't seen any in what's come in.
It is, so I wasn't here for this. I didn't hear everything. I did look over the testimony and thought about it a little bit, and listening to you now, it seems like it was a reasonable request on the planning commission's part to hold off on making a decision. What you've talked about was a process, whether it be trespass or that sort of thing stopping it, but if, it seems to me if there isn't at least an effort by the city to determine ownership, we could put ourselves in a position of liability if we approve a remodel on a house where, say, a brother and sister are fighting, the brother doesn't hear about it, $50,000 is spent on the roof, we've blessed it, they come back and say, well, you should have known better, this was, this was, this was intestate.
You know, it's always hard to talk about liability because you never know what a court or a jury would do, but I have, you know, if in fact, you know, the name's on the deed, and they show an issue of ownership for the city to act on it, I have difficulty envision a situation where the city would have liability.
He was in probate.
Is the name on, is her name on the deed? I thought that was the question.
It's in the name of the trust.
It's in the name of the trust. Okay, got it. I saw this tonight, I'm satisfied of ownership. I was just...
It was on property when we were here last time, that's all.
It probably still is.
It probably still is.
Okay. We'll be ready next time.
We ought to be reading Charles Dickens.
It's not that bleak.
Well, my feeling is since we've already approved it, there's really no need for anyone to show up tonight because they gave us the documents that they had, and that's that, you know. I don't think there's anything more for them to add, and we approved it last time. I don't see how we can't...
Not approve it.
Approve it for error. I mean, it seems, it seems kind of, you know, I mean, it's dumb. Whether you, whether we like it that we approved it or not, it's not even the issue. The fact is we did.
Some of us did.
Yeah, the people who were on the permission at the time did.
Yeah.
So I moved that we approve it.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knox?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Okay, then are we close to adjournment?
No.
Yeah, I know. Okay, do I get a motion for the chair to sign the appropriate orders?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knox?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah. So on this list, it has work session items, is there, that's, we don't have anything, okay. Good of order.
Okay, I've got something. I have to be good in order. I'd like to know, at our last meeting, I enquired about the garage, in quotes, on the, up on the first top of, well, some Harding property, I guess. I don't know if it was always Harding property, I can do an exchange of easements at one point, but anyway, there, and I was told unequivocally that it was a garage, and I said it doesn't look like a garage, and I sure would like to see our building inspectors go out and look at it and see if it really truly is a garage, because I've never seen a garage with a second story like that that was just a garage. And then I come to find out, and I don't know if this is true or not, but it isn't a garage, that it was an application for studio and a garage, so I'd like to know what it is.
Sure. I think that essentially the access easement that, and the conditions that it was approved under, and condition two of the Nicholson PD allowed for an access easement to be recorded or determine, mandatory access easement, and so that was recorded. Yes, Harding was part of, a party to that access easement, and it...
Why was Harding a party to it?
You know, I don't know, this ownership thing, you know, I don't know why they granted the...
No, I'm just curious, because I sat through all the, the whole Nicholson thing, and I remember that there was a whole list of conditions that were placed on Nicholson if you wanted to put this PUD in, very few of which is met to this day, and, and no one seems to be interested in doing anything about it. And now, I don't, I mean, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I just don't remember an access easement being discussed by the council at any of the meetings, and I don't remember anything about an exchange of easements, you know, being discussed. I know that their attorney went in at the last second and filed one, but I wonder if it ever came before the council, and if it was ever discussed as part of the conditions for this PUD, or if he just snuck it in under the radar at the last second.
Jeff, I went through this on page 71 of the larger packet, the 95 packet. This looks like what was presented to Luba. There is a common space and common access easement?
Yes.
That does not directly address the parking easement, which appears to have been subsequent, and I don't know this for fact. Again, if there was something that was slipped in or came later, it would, I certainly don't have information to see that. But I don't believe the Hardings were a party to this process at the time. My understanding, and anyone here can correct me if I'm wrong, they bought a property later, and then were now a part of that PUD. But in this original document that went before Luba, there was an access agreement for the entire four lots, and I think that's an important piece in, as I've looked at this, and I'll get more information, because that access agreement benefits all parties.
Right.
And one of the conditions that was important in determining that a homeowners association wasn't needed was that all of the space was accessible to all of the four lots. The parking easement may, I don't know this, the parking easement may go in the face of that, in that there's a, there's a no trespassing covenant in that easement, and it may...
See, I remember, my remembrance of that was that the easement did not go up the hill, that it, it came in from the side street, and it went, it went through the Nicholson property, but it didn't go up to the Harding property. That's how I remember it.
Well, it looks like, this is page 79 of that larger packet. It looks like that easement does go all the way from Laurel to, what would that be? Ash up above? Yeah, Ash. And there is in this packet that I have, an area that looks like, it's so small, it's hard to read, it's this, I think it's this future parking easement, and it's a little carve-out there in the corner.
For the benefit of the people in the PUD?
I think that's what's unclear.
Yeah.
Is, is, is this for the benefit of the people in the PUD, or is this for the benefit of the neighbor, right? And that's not stipulated, but I think it draws attention to a larger issue, which is, are all of the common areas in this PUD actually accessible to the, all of the owners in this PUD, or is there a carve-out in there for that parking easement?
And that's, that, see, and I know you're shrugging your shoulders because you weren't here when all of this went down, but that, I'm very concerned about that, because this whole issue was a huge issue, it was like the Dunes, you know, there were people testifying for days, there were people who were very concerned about it, and I feel like, and there was two lawyers representing Nicholson, and, and I, and they threatened, basically threatened a lawsuit at one point, obliquely, but it was there. And so I don't think that, I mean, now it's sort of like, okay, it's over, it's done, it happened, you know, and I don't think that's a good attitude. I think we need to find out what they did, why they had, what is, what was that exchange of easements, or what is that easement, and how, what did the Hardings have to do with this whole PUD? They had nothing to do with it. Their name was never mentioned, because I would have noticed if it was, I'll tell you that, if in any of the meetings, so...
Jeff, Bill, you guys, I listened to the audio recording just to make sure I understood it pretty carefully. You guys did talk before deciding to issue the permit?
To the Hardings?
To each other?
Oh, yes, yes.
To approve this? So Bill, you had an opinion that this was okay, based on what you knew?
Based on what I knew, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't see anything in the conditions that were granted.
Would you classify what was built there and what was applied for as an accessory dwelling, excuse me, accessory dwelling unit? Or an accessory dwelling...
Accessory structure.
Accessory structure?
Yeah. It's not accessory dwelling unit.
By the fact that there's studio space, it's not?
There's no kitchen. We've, we've, we ask our building official that explicitly, you know, you know, what, what determines an accessory dwelling unit in our language? And, you know, that's where I'd like to steer this conversation tonight, because quite frankly, I think we need to go forward, and this is, you know, I spend, if you, if I'm not shrugging my shoulders to shrug this off, I think we need to investigate this, but I think we need to do a better job in the future with planned developments and with the language within our code that defines these kind of things, because this is going to continue, you're going to spend my resources, the one planner you have, all my time going back in time trying to figure out what's going on. I don't have time to do that. I've got this, I want to pass this around, this is what we hope to get to this year, and then I want to send this around, and this is our current accessory dwelling language plus some other accessory dwelling language. And so, yes, we investigated this, we asked Bill's opinion on this, we had the permits, yes, if, when it first came into us, it had loft space, it had, you know, I don't think it even had truly a garage. I says, we can't, you know, all we can allow is a garage here. And so it had a stairwell, we said, no, we're not going to have it, you can't have a second story. We reviewed it against the conditions, so there was back and forth on this, and it was, it's not something that we went into lightly and not something we, you know, wanted. We, we are handcuffed by what our language says within our zoning ordinance and then within the building code on what each one of these terms are, livable space, habitable space, a second story, a garage, you know, they're not well-defined, and I think Oregon code, because Oregon building is, I think there's only two states in the entire US that doesn't use the International Residential Building Code, and this is one of those two. So they even have their own definitions of certain things, you know, like a garage and accessory dwelling type of things, and avoid really defining pretty much everything. So I think we need, it becomes us to put this kind of stuff in our lang, in that kind of language, and you'll see, some of the examples I passed out for the accessory dwelling unit, you'll see, if I can walk you through some of that, you'll see that it goes much further than ours does. I mean, you know, some say you have to have a three-quarter restroom or facilities, and then as far as kitchen, you know, what is, what's required in a kitchen? If you look at the different ones for that, Lane County, for instance, limits it by the percentage of the accessory dwelling by the percentage. It says a kitchen is, consists of a sink, counters, cabinets, refrigerator, and cooking appliances, or electrical outlets, and then it goes on and says it has to have a three-fourths or full bath. If you go down to Aspen, you'll see even a finer refinement of the kitchen under the 2C where it says, an accessory dwelling or carriage house has a minimum 30-inch wide oven, floor burner stove top, a sink, dishwasher. And so I'm giving you just examples that I've worked with throughout the country. They define these things much more than we do, where we're left to just say, you know, well, I don't remember hearing that in, in public hearing, I don't remember them saying that, I don't agree to, you know, there are eight Luba documents on this, so yes, this is highly contentious area up there, and it, you know, it would take all my time, and probably Bill's as well, to research all of this and try to figure this out, when we could do a better job, I think, in the future, A, not doing planned developments, and B, if we do them, have very strict definitions and conditions upon those. And, you know, I apologize if I haven't done as much as you want, but if you tell me exactly what you'd like to see next time, I will, I'll do my best to try to figure that. I just want you to know that when we do that, you take away of all this that we're wanting to do, but I think accessory dwelling unit, bed and breakfast, and what's the other one? One other can be combined into this, and that'd be a great next thing after we get done with special events, and we can start those workshops almost immediately.
I think that's a great idea, but I still want to know, what is that, what is that?
It's a garage.
With a second story?
We do not define what a person can have as storage space in a garage, that's...
No, I'm not talking about storage.
We do define how many square feet you can have.
Yes, and we do, and it meets that.
And I, my understanding, and I'm just talking about what I hear people speak, but I have no personal knowledge, that it is a place for a relative to live, and that relative is living there.
That would not be allowed under the conditions, if that is happening.
Well, how do we enforce that? What's the process?
So if there's code enforcement, we follow the code enforcement process, issue them the citation, and take them, variety of different actions, either municipal court or a circuit court, depending on the severity of it.
Well, has anybody been in, building inspector been in?
Yes.
To see what is there?
Yes, we have a building inspector that has to go and do the inspections as part of that, you know.
Have you come back and say, it's, it's not a garage, it's a studio, it's an apartment?
Well, once again, it's a garage. I don't know, we don't have definitions of what a studio is, or, you know, even, even beyond that, you know what I'm saying? We're saying it can't be habitable space in that loft area. We're not allowing a stairwell up there or access up there, it can't be a loft area.
So it's not an accessory dwelling?
Excuse me?
So it's not an accessory dwelling?
It's an accessory structure, right.
It's not a dwelling?
Not a dwelling.
So Jeff...
See, what kind of confuses me, when I built my accessory building, and this is what, 12, 13 years ago now, they said I could not build over 12 feet high, because I had wanted to do... Because I had wanted to do some different, and so I don't know how they came up with that at the time, but that was certainly what they told me.
Yeah. If it's in your required backyard, it, it's limited to twelve, unless you put in for a development permit.
No.
And if it's on the oceanfront, it's, it's, what's the limit of the, of a third row?
Yeah, it's not, that's not defined, that's just oceanfront setback that, that, you know?
So it's the height limit, the same height as a house?
Yeah, it's the same as a house for any accessory, for any accessory structure. Unless, like you said, it's in a required yard.
So Jeff, first of all, you'll notice I haven't called you on that tree limb that somebody cut on my yard that I called you about and asked you to look in. I know you're under a lot of pressure, you're taking on a lot of projects, and big projects at that. And stepping into this particular mess, I, I don't envy everything you've had to vet. And as I look back on it, it's like, oh God, what a great way to get blindsided, walking into this process, because there is so much energy on it in the community. And I've, I'm, I'm, I don't think I'm alone. I'm, I've heard from community members about this. I, I had to get up to speed really quick. I, I don't think I'm alone. So as we talk about what's important here, I think this particular body is telling you this is an important issue. My question then is, if we have concerns about what was done and the process, whether we're talking about an accessory dwelling unit or accessory dwelling, accessory building, what are our next productive steps as a body that represents the citizens of this community to, to make sure this was done properly? Because there's, there's some questions that I have in just looking at this. And in a very short time, I go, mm, yeah, maybe, maybe it got stretched here a little bit. What do the two of you suggest we do, we suggest to you as next steps? I know your time, you've got a lot of projects. What's, what's, what are some action items here? This is something that's come up too many times to ignore.
I don't know.
I mean, you know, it, it sounds like the concerns that you have are, you know, is it consistent with the code? Is it consistent with the conditions? And the particular condition, you know, code concerns are, are height, are dwelling space. And the dwelling space issue is also an issue under the conditions. You know, the preliminary review that, that Jeff's done is that it's consistent with the code and the conditions. It, you know, I, I, I think you probably talked to the building inspector or the, the, you know, whoever built it out there to take a look at what is, go in there and see what's upstairs in, in, in the attic area.
I think that's one part of it. But another part is, you know, as I look at what I think any reasonable person would in terms of what was approved here, all I see is parking easement. It doesn't say parking easement for the exclusive use of a neighbor. It doesn't say parking easement for the exclusive use to build a building at the restriction of the other owners in that. And I think that's a pretty important point.
Well, the parking easement says, you know, the grantee parking area may be used, maintained, and improved by the, only the grantee benefited parties for parking. Grantee may build any improvements on the grantee parking area as permitted by local ordinance. It says it in the easement.
I think, I think the challenge I have, the problem I have with that is it runs counter to the approval of this as a, as a planned development to begin with. Which is, there had to be a homeowners association if there were parts of this that were not commonly owned. And I think one could make the argument that this is not a part of that homeowners association.
That's an issue I haven't heard until tonight, and I want to go back and look at the approval and see if in fact there is, you know, that idea that, you know, this is a common area that all homeowners have to have access to and can't be parceled out like that. If in fact that's, that was part of the approval, and they did in fact parcel it out, then there might be an issue with that. That concern was one I, I hadn't heard expressed.
I think that's really important, if I said, because all along, since the very beginning of this whole thing, Nicholson has stung his nose at the city and ended up doing what he wanted to do. His living wall looks like crap. It's not a living wall, it has scraggly ferns hanging out of it. It looks terrible. That was not the picture we were shown. Everything that he has said he was going to do, not destroy anyone, not hurt anybody's driveway, all the things that he claimed he was going to do, he has gotten away with doing it the way he wants. And I think this is just another example of it. And I don't, I mean, I just don't, I hate to think that our city is going to be blackmailed by two shiny castle loafer people, lawyers who come in here and threaten the city with a lawsuit, and then they capitulate and let this guy have whatever he wants. The whole thing was so ugly, including bringing in a bunch of people on the bus who don't even live there to testify in this deal. And who said that, they didn't even know where the property was. They just showed up, you know? And so it was just, the whole thing was, it, it's, it destroys your faith in local governance when things like that happen. And that's why I think it's important, if for no other reason.
Partly what you're talking about is the incrementalism of this whole process. Coming in, trying to get one thing, not getting it one way, and then wheeling out a new way of getting it. And I guess that's my concern is, you know, what's this, what's this preview of? You know, what's going to be the next thing? Is there going to be an accessory dwelling, you know, attached to this garage? You know, where's this going?
Garage, that's like a dwelling. I'm sorry, it does. I don't, I don't know, I haven't been in it.
Well, it's, it's, it's great that it fits in so well with the neighborhood. But, you know, I, I didn't think it's a garage, in my.
It's not a garage. Why would you need a two-story garage if unless you have an elevator in there?
It's a garage, and there's a garage apartment.
Yeah. I mean, it, it just, and I, and I just, I know, I mean, I know that this is part of the last, and I, and it, and it's true. You weren't here for it, so you, and now you're having to suffer the dregs of this argument that goes on forever, you know? But it, but it is, it is an important.
I, I agree. And I, you know, I hope, I hope no one here doesn't believe I don't think it's important. I just want to, next time to, if you ever see a condition like three that says the total square footage of habitable space on the site shall not exceed nine thousand square feet amongst four different places, don't ever even, you know, tell, tell the.
That's the challenge, is this body said we don't want?
I know, I know, I know. And that's it. I mean, but recommend to them, do not approve this.
We did, it was unanimous. We said, no, absolutely not.
How many times have we rejected, three or four?
Yeah, we rejected two or four times, and we rejected it unanimously.
Yeah, because I'm dealing with that right now.
And they came in with, I'm serious. And, and I think they intimidated, that, that council was made up of different people then, too. And I think that a lot of council members were intimidated by this thing, you know, the kind of, the, the sort of threat that if you don't do this, we're taking it to Luba. I don't know on what basis they would have done that, but, you know? It just, that, and so it was, it sort of started this whole feeling of lack of faith in it. And, or having an ineffective planning commission and ineffective council. And I don't think that anybody wants that, or wants to feel that way. So I think that when people in the town come to us and they're still complaining about it because nothing has been, because the living wall looks like crap, and because some driveway was injured, and because there's this thing sitting up there on the top of the cliff that is nothing, doesn't seem to have any connection to what was supposed to go in there, I, I can see why people are upset, because they feel duped. And they feel like, wow, you know, we don't have a Duchess and a King in this community. You know?
You know, the way I look at this is that, you know, I foresee another house going up, and this will be the accessory dwelling attached to it. Well, but that's what I.
No, there can only be four homes, I mean, the conditions are, you know, at least clear on that. There can be only four homes on here, and they have to, they cannot exceed nine thousand square.
Well, what is this thing?
That's, that is not a home, that's an accessory, accessory garage. It's accessory unit.
To what?
It's, it's a garage, it's, it's in the.
So what is it, an accessory?
Yeah, it's, it's to the.
Hard access.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound any different to me. Um, thank you for letting me speak. For the record, Bruce St. Dennis City Manager. Jeff and I are in the same position on this. We kind of walked in after it had all happened. I recently started to hear some of the issues that have been, that you are bringing up now. What I would like to recommend is that we have a chance to work with Bill to look at some of the specific things that are there and, and verify. It was supposed to be a garage. We're hearing that it may be a dwelling unit of some kind. Let's find out what it is. You know, kind of go back and, you know, but, but to try to address the specific problems that you have and that the public has, and, and try to get those answers. Beyond that, I, you know, until everything is built, we won't know, and probably even after that, if, if the whole concept is going to work. But I do agree with Jeff that, um, once we learn, get our lessons learned from this, that we do make an effort to try to go ahead and tighten up this sort of thing. And I know that's been one of Jeff's priorities since he got here, so. But if that would be okay with you folks, maybe we can try to report back in a month or two.
That'd be great.
That'd be super.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think it is an urgent matter, because I, I can see these little pods developing along 101.
Sure, yeah.
With offshoots of Cannon Beach.
Yes. And we may be close to having our code enforcement officer. We just, we're down to a couple of applicants, so. Uh, and that's something that we need to be able to go ahead and do this follow-up.
Yeah, I mean, the few times that I've gone by that property, I mean, electricians, plumbers, all those vans have been up there. So I know that this is not just a straightforward garage.
Yeah, and it's, you know, and, and again, when you come in, somebody can come in and say, I'm going to build a garage, but we don't always know everything that happens after that. And it can, and I think that, Joe, you used the word incrementally, and sometimes these projects, you know, go, move forward incrementally. And then somebody says, oh, you know, there's probably somebody living in there, or, or they, they see somebody in there. That doesn't necessarily get back to us. But we have to also be careful of what we do. I mean, we just can't barge in. And so that's why I want to make sure we're working with Bill as far as, you know, what steps we can take to try to gain access, that sort of thing. Okay? I mean, is that acceptable?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, sure enough, thank you.
Okay. So, anything else?
Just to make sure we're, we're all on the same page. Bill, you're going to look at this issue around access, both the, the overall access for the PUD.
When you say overall access, because I understand that that means that the PUD.
There's an access agreement that I have here. Let me see what page this is.
Maybe the thing to do is talk offline.
Sure. Okay, well, generally, to look at the access agreement for the entire PUD and compare that to the access agreement, or the easement agreement. Looks like it's labeled access easement.
It's also access easement.
Access easement. And compare that to the access easement that was between Lucy's cottages and the Hardings. And see if that is in conflict, if the two documents conflict with one another.
Regardless of whether there's a conflict between those two easements, critical thing in my view is not the conflict between those easements, but whether there's any conflict between what was done with, was accomplished with those access easements with the approval that was granted by the city.
Okay, yes. Because it's possible that the access easement would change the definition of what that was and should never have happened. So I guess that's the bigger picture. I'm, I'm not able to eloquent it in legal terms, but that's, that's the concern.
My understanding was that, that the project was fairly specific as to what the lots were and what was going to be placed on those lots.
Overall, there, from what I could read here, there may be something else. There was no mention of any kind of an accessory structure or dwelling or anything like that. It seemed to be a parking space, from what was presented to the, to city.
Well, my, my point is, when the, the project was presented, I assume, when the, you know, I make a point of not going to the council meetings to find out how to support or not support things like this, but, um, my understanding was that there were supposed to be certain size houses put in those spaces in those lots. And that was all set up ahead of time. And I assume that the council saw some of that as well, in the process. And it didn't have garages. Living walls, yes, but nothing about garages that were unattached to houses. In this case, you've got a house attached to the garages.
And this point may go along with the, the point just made. I'm on page nine of fifteen, CBMC seventeen forty dot zero eight zero. I'll just read it real quick. And, and Bill, I don't know if this is in reference to code, or this is in reference to the specific, but it seems to apply. The approved final plan and stage development schedule shall control the issuance of all building permits and shall restrict the nature, location, and design of all uses. Minor changes in the approved preliminary or final development plan may be approved by the code enforcement officer if such changes are consistent with the purpose and general character of the development plan. I would say that it was not. All other modifications, including extension, extensions of the stage development schedule shall be processed in the same manner as the original application and shall be subject to the same procedural requirements. So I'd like an interpretation from you as to whether that applies to the case on this, um, this permit.
That'll take some time, I'm sure, but.
I think it's, I think it's pretty key to the, to the question of, of issuing that permit.
Can I bring up another, oh, I want to bring up one other thing?
Okay.
I just want to ask, do towns in Oregon or anywhere else ever have a limit on how many square feet a house can be in a lot, regardless of the lot size?
Sure, yeah.
In other words, but Cannon Beach does not.
We have a lot coverage and a, a four-area ratio. But, yeah, I mean, there's various ways of doing it. I mean, we have a limitation on the size of an accessory dwelling.
I'm talking about a house. Like, I'm, I'm talking about ten thousand square foot houses built on the oceanfront legally. I mean, they, they, it's the right size for the lot. But can a town regulate how big of a house?
I'm not familiar with Oregon, but yes, in other states, they definitely do.
Because I'd like to entertain that Cannon Beach do the same thing.
Well, one of the things I will point out in that dwelling unit one that I gave you is that if you look, and one of the reasons I use that as an example, if I can find it, is I think it's Frisco, well, let's see, one of them actually, and Ben does this as well, is they give them bonuses, it's kind of an incentive structure. Frisco says accessory dwelling unit exemption. So what they're saying is, if you use an accessory dwelling unit, it doesn't count against your lot coverage or lot size and those kind of density requirements. Aspen, a bunch of communities utilize some type of technique. And so I think it's Aspen or some community that, they use their transfer development right program to work into that, to where you're allowed to build, say, eighteen hundred square foot homes. So if you want to go above that, you can buy incremental transfer development rights to build above that limit. But by doing that, it builds to their inclusionary or workforce housing program. So, you know, there's a great, these are great tools for communities to get different forms of housing. And, and they're being utilized quite a bit, you know, throughout the country, not just Oregon.
But because we have a, a big housing shortage, shared workforce housing, or just housing that people can afford, you know? And then there's a ten thousand square foot house for two people that goes up on the oceanfront. I mean, regardless of the fact that I find that personally obscene, that has nothing to do with this. I'm saying, I think that as a town, we should really, as a community, we should look at that, about, about how to encourage people to, or, or even. we should look at that, about, about how to encourage people to, or, or even regulate how big a house can be and, or if you do build a house that you have, I mean, there's ways of, there's all kinds of ways of structuring it, like you said. But I, I, I would like to entertain that. I don't know how I would go about doing that.
I can easily work it into, when I talked about combining the bed, breakfast, the affordable housing and accessory dwelling, to do that because what we're really talking about is unit size and, and that would be a great way to kind of bring that into the conversation. And so, we could at least have a work session on that and feel out kind of what direction we want to take it over a couple of work sessions.
How do you all feel about that?
I'd like to know more about it.
Yeah. It seems to me that, you know, the horse is already up that gate. We have lot, we have lots of, you know, pretty large structures in this town that are usually empty.
But more is still going up, more is still going up, and they are usually empty. There's, there are second homes, 10,000 square foot second homes.
Well, or corporate homes or whatever.
Yeah, but, and there's, there's one, a large house being built right now on the road up to Homewood Park. It's just, you know, and they're huge, I mean, there's, I don't.
Yeah, one of the reasons I, I, I want to bring it up is because Aspen and some of the other cities, they utilize a transfer development program like Ketchum. They utilize that so that they keep those historic cottages and those historic buildings because they can sell those transfer development rights instead of allowing someone to come in and scrape off the cottage and build the balloon house. They can sell that space that they would be using to someone else and still get some, and keep that historic structure there. So, there's, you know, it can be a tool is what I'm, what I'm trying to say. Okay. Any other items?
No, no, see if I can.
Okay. Happy Thanksgiving.
Well, Commissioner Johnson, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. You did mention last time that you wanted to address the conditional use permits around B and Bs. Was that ever wrapped up in your last meeting? Or do you want?
Well, I see that on this list, so. That's what, that'll be part of that.
Okay, okay.
Because unfortunately with Oregon, when you do a land use change, you've got to notice by everybody, so let's get our bang for our buck and try to get as many done with that. Okay, we're adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving.